And so like, I mean, I live in New York, but not like forever. I mean, it's not forever. So it was not like, yeah, so I probably should have done it.
Yeah, this is hard.
I did it. Anyway, just do it different.
I will, um, so when we go there.
Yeah, we can adjust that. I just wasn't sure. No. The leftover. So. Yeah. I mean, honestly, like, that's where I would.
Money allocation.
So they did. I mean, I have. I just want to see you looking at your screen. You know, so it's different. Oh. The children was a whole new thing. I don't know. Okay.
Be good. And we're gonna start.
He said he wants to do this.
For the longest time.
It was.
All right. Good evening. Okay, we have a 6:00 PM work session scheduled to talk about enrollment and budget impacts. So we're gonna call Kathy Johnson to the podium.
Where's yours?
Nope, the next one. No, did it get lost? Try the PowerPoint itself.
Good evening. Kathy Johnson, Executive Director of Finance. And if you, if you can hear me okay with this on, I'll leave it on or I can take it off, whichever. Sometimes I get muffled. So let me know if I'm hard to hear. The goal tonight is to kind of give you kind of an update of where our unaudited enrollment is and kind of what that means to funding, to lay some groundwork so that as we get to some of the next meetings, whether we do it at a meeting or a separate work session on budget, that you have some, some kind of groundwork as to what we're working from, all subject to change as new information comes in and we have evolved going forward. Several of you have probably seen some of these slides or all of them, either at a different committee meeting or something. So I apologize for some of the duplication, but I think it's helpful to share with the whole board so everybody is on the same page. So the first kind of a quick overview, we'll kind of just have a quick slide on the strategic plan. We'll talk about headcount, enrollment FTE and waitings, the funding, and then as part of the budget program and evaluation committee, we have created some subcommittees to really help navigate where we need to get to budget-wise going into 2223. So just kind of as a reminder that budget falls in the strategic plan in theme five, database decisions, and it's kind of B, allocating resources according to research-based best practices for student success. And really, the budget supports all of those other themes, you know, what's needed for staffing, what's needed for supplies, all the different resources, and any one of those other themes is then what drives what the budget needs to support. So as we talk about funding, before we kind of get to that, there's enrollment that's headcount. And the headcount of enrollment isn't what necessarily drives the finance formula, but we do a lot of budgeting based on headcounts, staffing, position controls, the thresholds for class size, we do per pupil building allocations. And we have a lot of state reporting that is also based on cost per student by building and things like that. So headcount is used in a lot of spaces, and it's important to understand that and then translate that into full-time equivalency or FTE for funding. So the, the next couple of slides is just to share a little bit about what's going on with our enrollment, and unfortunately, it's not going up. So this first slide is just a kind of a historical look at our enrollment, and it's kind of interesting to see that in 2000, 2001, we were at 10,0284. We went through this window of being below 10,000 for a long time. Then for the next few years, we've been 10,007 at its peak, and then kind of COVID hit, and we are back down into this 9,900 period. And enrollment is not going back up. So you can see from this that although sometimes we feel like Lawrence is growing by leaps and bounds because of all the construction, when it comes to enrollment in our schools, it's pretty flat, or it does the seesaw business, which makes it really hard sometimes. We're pretty transient, which we've talked about, and it kind of impacts how we plan and what's going on. And unfortunately, it's not going up as a result of what we had hoped. So the next couple of slides are just kind of breaking it down by school or elementary, middle, and high, and kind of giving a couple of different points of reference that we had kind of unofficial count on January of 2020. What our SO66 said a year ago, kind of where we projected, hoping about 50% would come back, and you can see where our unaudited superintendent's report showed enrollment for elementary. And it's down, even below what the 2021 level was. So you can kind of hear by grade that the blue is our projections and the green is kind of what is unaudited. And, and the, the low grades is kind of where it's kind of kept being low, that they haven't come back. The upper grades, not as much, but the kindergarten through third seems to be where we're not really getting some of those kids back and kindergarten included. The middle school kind of shows the same thing, and really, the seventh grade is where it really dropped and hasn't kind of re, regone up. Eighth grade, not so much. Sixth grade kind of came up a little bit and stayed steady. High school, we didn't see a lot of change. So high school kids come back for athletics and activities, and so our high schools really didn't see the same kind of declines as our other schools. So keeping this in mind and looking at what we know will be a parallel kind of work to the budget committee is the boundary committee. And so what do these enrollments mean to our capacities and our efficiency and utilization of our buildings? And the consultant that we've used has, and, and post-bond, 85 to 95% is sort of that sweet spot of where they would see buildings. And you can see from our elementary schools, the orange or salmon color would be what those calculated capacities are. The green is what our enrollment this year is showing and what that percent to capacity is. And we have no schools, even at the low end of the 85%, and we actually have a couple of schools below 60%. At 85%, it would be the blue, and each of the schools kind of shows you how many more kids they could take. And then the yellow-ish would be at 95%. So looking at how many buildings we have, how those are all staffed per building, and looking at trying to find effective use, utilization of our buildings, efficiency in, in staffing and other things, this will be part of what the boundary committee will have to look at. And, and the cost per building when we staff a building fully, but that it, you know, at 56% is the same as what we would staff a Deerfield at 81% utilization. So, so we could create some efficiencies, and that'll be looked at. This is kind of the same information for middle and high. You can kind of see that none of our middle schools are in that 85 to 95% range, and we actually have one of our middle schools below 70%. And then the blue being at 85 and the yellow being at 95. High school, other than kind of disproportionate, based on that 15th Street, you can see that over time, because it's always been 15th Street, Free State has a higher percentage than Lawrence High as far as that enrollment to capacity. But in total, you know, are, are within, within range of 85% if you kind of netted those. So this just kind of tells you some of the spaces that the boundary committee will probably need to look at in conjunction with what it costs to staff those buildings and how that fits into the budget piece. So a little bit of parallel, but as examples of what if come up, then we can navigate the cost analysis of that and see what that would look like based on where the lines would get drawn and things like that. Any questions about that little segment of information? Can always come back to questions at the end, but wanted to kind of lay that groundwork a little bit because you'll, you'll be getting more information at future meetings about some of the things that are being discussed to make sure that if we're coming to a fork in the road, we know which direction we need to go to meet some certain statutory dates and, and timeline for resolutions and things like that if we were to move ahead with changing how a building looks or having less buildings kind of thing. So if no questions, I'm gonna go into FTE. FTE is what we're actually financed on. And FTE is full-time equivalency, and the enrollment for this September 20 is what we're using to plan for 2223. And so that's the core enrollment. So what we're using in the current year is what would have been prior year. So when you look at how that actually works, before we kind of get there, you can kind of see what our enrollment's done. So that high point of 10,704, 17, 18, 19, last year was 9,973. We had hoped 50% would come back, and it didn't. This is all that we have. So the 10,027 is a lot less than what we had hoped for coming into this year. And so we have to think about how that impacts current year as well as what that's doing to our, our future here. The formula does have some options that help us with some declining provisions, but at some point, you have to catch up with that drop. It's not a forever, we're grandfathered. So if we don't grow with enrollment, then at some point, we start catching up with that drop of enrollment. So just to kind of give you some perspective, in 17 and 18, we should have used the 92016 enrollment, which was the 10,704. It was the highest one of our options, and so that's what we used. In 1819, we should have used the 92017 enrollment, which was 10,657. It's lower than the year before, so declining provision allowed us to use the year before's enrollment FTE. Do you see how that worked? And then the next year, our enrollment kind of went back up, and it was the higher of the two, so we used a regular enrollment. Coming into 2021, we should have used 92019. It was a drop, so we used the declining provision of 10,793. Coming into this current year, we should have used 92020. That's 9,0973.1, huge drop. So we can use the higher of the year before, which was the 10,624, but it's still a drop from what we had been doing. So as you remember, last year, we had to come up with some kind of permanent and ongoing reductions in budget because even though base day aid went up, the, the increase of kids was not there or even stable kids. So we had to realize some of that drop of enrollment. We were hoping for 2223 planning, that 50% would come back, and we could kind of look at a three-year averaging or, or possibly not if we, we end up not qualifying. That's not gonna happen. So here's where we are with the current enrollment unaudited. If we three-year average, we still have to recognize from 10,624, the drop clear down to here. And if we don't get to average, then it's clear down to here. So you can see that we are going to have to realize that drop of enrollment, and it was a significant drop for us. So it really has us having to look at things differently, not just to bridge a gap, but for, for a couple of years down the road until any enrollment might grow. And if it never grows, then we have to get ourselves in line with that. Does that make sense?
What would qualify, what would make it so we didn't qualify to?
There's a military question in there, and I'm, I'm working with Craig and, and the state to figure out if, if I answer that. No, does that mean we won't average? And if so, then, so I'll, I'll have that information here soon. But it is a possibility that we won't be able to qualify with some changes in the way the finance formula was changed a little bit when Gannon was approved. There's some caveats that are, we haven't had to try to use since that change, and so I just need to do some verification. But I'll show you what the difference is funding-wise. Any questions on that? Does that all make sense? Unfortunately, we just are not gaining our enrollment back, and so it really does make a difference. Even when base day aid goes up, it just doesn't go up enough to offset that really dramatic drop. Enrollment waitings then are important because they impact the current year. Unlike core enrollment, which will be next year, these will impact. Unlike core enrollment, which will be next year, these will impact this year. But then what, what happens next year will be based on, will that, you know, if enrollment doesn't grow, then those weightings will stay low and we won't actually gain any dollars back. As a reminder of what those weightings are, it's at-risk four-year-old, bilingual, CTE, at-risk K-12, virtual education and special education. So besides our significant drop in enrollment, which is going to make all of those weightings go down because it's a proportionate amount of, of the total enrollment, we also had a change in how we collected information for at-risk funding. With USDA giving all free lunches, we had to switch from the free and reduced application to what they called a household economic survey, which kind of threw a lot of people for a loop. And a lot of people, we didn't get, didn't get some of those turned in in understanding that we really needed that by 9/20 in order for us to determine what our at-risk funding is. Some of these counts also impact Title I and some other spaces. And as a result, there wasn't incentive for free lunch in order for them to get them in quickly. So it took a while to get those collected. But if they weren't in place by 9/20, we didn't get at-risk, we won't get at-risk funding with those counts. We will get them eventually for fee waivers, but we have to start all over again next fall. So in looking at what next year looks like for these surveys, if they go that route and don't go back to free and reduced applications and, and not free lunch. So that's kind of a big variable, but it is impacted statewide, what schools are seeing in their at-risk funding. Unfortunately, it's a drop. And for us, it was actually a drop even below 2021 and 1819. So what you can see here is the legal max weightings. This is what we planned for, which was really pretty flat. You know, the enrollment had dropped, weightings aren't going to go up. Even with 50% going up, we shouldn't see a big change in our weightings. Usteded, you can see how much different that particular weighting was compared to. And so overall, it's about 181 FTE lower than what we planned, which is going to impact us this year and amounts to about $852,257. We aren't going to realize this year that we had planned for. So kind of like last year, we have a, a current year deficit we're dealing with. On top of that, we have state aid for virtual enrollment and the enrollment went down. We had planned and expected virtual to stay pretty stable from last year and it didn't. It went down quite a bit. And so it's a million dollar swing for us, which if the state aid for virtual isn't there, then we have to come up with general fund, local dollars to make up that difference in state aid that's lost. If you remember from last year's budget and the publication and information in August, the, the virtual schools budget runs around $5,003,000 that we have planned. And of course, staff for and all those things, so those are already in place. The difference between that $5,003,000-ish and the 5.7 is helping with general fund indirect costs that support virtual and, and other. So when that state aid completely goes away, the only option is to find local general fund transfer into virtual or decrease virtual costs. Well, if we don't have a budget to transfer to virtual because we've had enough state aid, now we have not enough general funds to cover that transfer and we have to dig inward. I hope that makes sense. And so when you look at what happens totally, you'll see that in 1920, we had a budget of 104.9 million. We planned for 2021 to be at 109 million. We were only at 104 when all was said and done. So we had a budget cut in mid-year or deficit during the 2021 year of about 4.5. We froze spending. There's a lot of vacancies that did not get filled in order to squeeze expenditures down into the bucket that we'd been given. It's kind of like taking that 12-ounce ladder of the water and having to make it eight ounces. Well, the same thing when we planned, we had planned at about 107. We expected some of that enrollment to come back and it didn't. So, but, but in order to do that, the base state aid went up, but yet we didn't cover all 4.5. So we made permanent and ongoing cuts a year ago of 1,005. Our planning was to be at about 1,007. We're at about 1,005. So current year shortfall is 1,00748 for this current year before June 30. So again, shrinking maybe not 12 ounces into eight, but 10 ounces back into eight. So we're, we're having to shrink current year. That does mean that we will hopefully not have to do a full freeze like we did and so early, which was in February or March last year, but there will be some vacancies that we may not be able to hire or expenditures that we have to shrink backwards in order to stay within that, that bucket. This impacts going forward. So just as a reminder, we do have base state aid that has been going up, but when enrollment drops to the degree that we're seeing enrollment drop, it will not make up for, that base state aid will just not make up for that loss of resources. So this is kind of where we are. When we go forward then, you can see just what I shared with you. And the, the estimate for 22, 23 is around this 105 mark because we have to realize even more of a drop of enrollment than we did for the current year. So it looks like, and again, these are all subject to change as we continue to evaluate and continue to get audited numbers and, and, and work things through, but about $2 million for permanent and ongoing for next year. And it's because our enrollment, we still have to realize a big piece of that drop that we haven't realized yet. If we don't average, it could be as high as 3 million. So it, it's significant where that window is. Again, it'll evolve, we'll continue to, to bring estimates, but we have a lot of work to try to make a, a priority plan, a way that we can pick and choose some things so that as, as those updates happen, we know how far we have to go into reductions and what we might need to do for ads and those kinds of things. So any questions on this piece so far? And again, questions time at the end as I keep going through. One of the things that we talked about at a previous meeting, pretty much at the budget meeting in August, when we were approving for 20, what year are we? 21, 22, was our contingency reserve and that we really needed to purposefully try to figure out if we can build a transfer in. If we were to do this, this is just a chart. This is just to lay out some examples so that we can have further conversations going forward. But right now, our June 30 of 21 balance was 805,801. We had to take a chunk of that to get, we got to that number because of the gas utility, if you recall. Well, if you look at the chart, based on the 2021 legal max, you would, that's about 1% of that, that general fund legal max information. 2% would be this 1,006. So even if we just tried to do a budget addition to, to get to 2% instead of 1%, we would need to do an add of 795,457. Does that kind of make sense? If you wanted to do more, you'd have to put more on the add column and find more reductions on the reduction column. One of the things that we always look at, and again, this is subject to change based on subcommittee work and lots of things that could, could come into play. But if we were to just look at elementary like we always do, thresholds being what's on the left, we are currently staffed based on enrollment not increasing at 10 general fund FTE more than what we would need to plan for in 22, 23 if enrollment stayed flat. So that is a reduction, just a natural reduction. Now, if we change thresholds, if we look at class size differently, if we restructure some things, that number could change, but just let's, as an example, that would be one thing to, to look at. So if we start kind of building what's that add and addition and reduction kind of chart, and again, all subject to change, continue to evaluate, subcommittees are doing work or, you know, well, this is going to change. But let's just say we're kind of navigating that plus and minus. And the, the budget shortfall is at that $2 million mark. And we know gas is going to have a utility rate. We know property insurance is probably going to go up another, that 10% based on how the industry is looking. You can see how the cumulative continues to be deficit. If we did a 1% to bring contingency reserve to a 2% level, we have 795. If nothing changes and there's no enrollment growth, that would be a reduction. And then every 1% of a salary pool is 825. So a 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%, that kind of thing, just to kind of tell you how that number grows. So anything you're doing on this addition side, we have to come up with reductions on the other side in order to get this number to be zero. Does that kind of all make sense? So how or what are we doing to really dig into spaces and pieces and parts so we can kind of bring back information to you? So within the budget committee, we have created subcommittees that are looking at very focused parts of the budget and trying to come up with high, medium and low amounts of cost savings and listing pros and cons around those savings. And further discussion will happen after we kind of get this preliminary information from them. But there's elementary, middle, high administration, special education facilities, curriculum instruction, ESL, athletics and activities, kind of the broad, those are the nine. Lots of things could fall under one or the other or many of them because you, you know how those fingers and dominoes, one thing happens here and it dominoes into another space. But those are what the subcommittees have been broken to. We gave them this tentative or kind of preliminary timeline so that we can try to get information, preliminary information for some discussions back to the budget committee by the 15th of December. And so this is kind of that timeline. I did visit with Dr. Lewis a little bit about whether it would make sense to bring something to the December 13th meeting for you to have some preliminary work, kind of a broader conversation, work-study kind of scenario, or maybe set something on the 20th of December after the budget committee meets to really kind of let you get in some working groups and have some conversation about a lot of the brainstorming that has happened for proposals. So that if there's things that are definitely off the table, we take them off. And if there's forks in the road we need to think about, we can't do both, which one do we want to go? You know, you can have some input and, and some insight into that or ask more questions kind of thing. The meeting objectives, first one was to really establish, you know, their meeting dates and, and look at norms, start brainstorming, figure out what data they needed so that we could get that back to them. That all happened with each of the groups before break. They will be having their second meeting this week to kind of take that data and really look at what that means with options, try to rank some of those, look at pros and cons and just continue to think about what, what things we can look at in each of those areas. And then the third meeting will be to fine tune that into some, some rough proposals that we can look at as part of the budget committee. If there's more information needed, those committees might not be done. And we'll just continue to use them as sounding boards and ways to evaluate different pieces of the budget to try to get to a total that ultimately will, will evolve. The membership of each of those is kind of here. I just gave you a quick snapshot of that. I won't read through each one of them, but we have members from the budget committee. We have certified classified administrative right now and districts just trying to start the process of really getting. So as we present information back to the board or there's other spaces in which, you know, public comment or things like that might occur, then, then you would also be hearing from, from others. Questions? I know I did that fairly fast. I wanted to make sure that you had some time here at the end and then really thinking that you may want to use a bigger space of time and a couple hours, maybe even for a, a work session or something in the near future, especially after we get these preliminary brainstorming ideas from our groups. So thoughts, questions?
Well, thank you for this, this information. Always find it very, very helpful as you walk us through that. I don't have a question right now, but on the last slide, is there a way to indicate that at least two board members will be a part of this as well? Or is that on here?
This, this is subcommittee, but on the actual budget and program evaluation committee, yes. There are two, Erica is one of the board members and Carol is the other. That is actually on the budget committee that'll hear from these subcommittees through that process as well, yes. So I can add that to this slide, sure, absolutely.
Kathy, as always, thank you for your incredibly thorough work to help us understand the challenges that, that the district is facing and what our plan is to address them. My, I have a couple of questions. So you started, you started at the beginning with the, the tie-in to our strategic plan about, you know, budgeting based on research-based best practices. So what, the first question I have is how, how does that directive work into the work that the subcommittees are being asked to do? Are they, will they be asked as part of their pros and cons to identify? In order, you know, in order for the information when it comes to us, for us to understand what are the research-based best practices that are underlying their recommendations? How, how will that be reflected in their work?
They are doing some of that work, I can say for sure. Already I've seen with the elementary, you know, what is the research on class size? What is, so, so they are asking those questions. And I think it will, for as much as possible, kind of, on this initial window is fairly short, but, but trying to see what other districts are doing, see what, what appears to be best practice. To the degree that we can, can do sometimes those best practices, I, I think we've always had goals of a class size in mind, but budget is the reality we have to function within. And sometimes as much as research might say one thing, we can only fund to a certain level. And then you have to start navigating those priorities. And I think that that's kind of, will also evolve out of those report backs. And I think if there's some additional information that didn't surface as a result of a research basis for the decision or the proposal or the, we would definitely want to try to navigate that in so that we can make sure we've thought about what, what's happening. Districts, all districts are kind of experiencing the same crunch. And data is going to be super important as we look at the legislative session and whether they decide going forward what our funding might look like, especially when that base state aid per pupil turns into a cost of living factor. And so the more we can have that available, when those opportunities might arise, helping the state understand that, that we need this funding.
And you're really right about that. And it's going to be especially important around the conversation around at-risk funding. I think there will be a big push to further reduce or restrict, either reduce the funding that we're getting for that weighting or restrict the ways that we can spend it, which I know is really problematic, especially, it's, it's problematic when you're not in a budget crisis, but it's especially problematic if you lose your ability to be flexible with those funds to meet student needs, which all the conversation I've seen really hasn't been focused on student needs. It's been focused on, are there ways that we can find to take more money away from public schools? So yeah, I'm really, I mean, I'm really concerned about the, what could potentially be a perfect storm for us of the budget realities under the school funding formula and the political situation that seems to be brewing in Topeka with anti-public education advocates, so.
And, and the layer of all this ESER money, which needs to kind of be pulled out of the picture because it's going to go away and have its own cliff.
Right, but they, they.
It's getting all co-mingled in the same conversation.
Anti-public ed people really want to say, oh, you have more money than you can spend. Well, that's not true. We can't spend it on ongoing costs for, for salaries because three years from now, we, we will.
Lose it.
Be crippled by, by, if we were to handle it that way, which I don't think we're allowed to anyway. But it's, it's kind of a perfect storm of bad situations on both sides. So I have a couple of other questions, but I, I'll wait until other people have had a chance to ask theirs.
So I just have one. So as, as always, as, as had been said, I always appreciate these conversations. I always learn something. And so I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask you a, a question. I apologize that I didn't get a chance to email it to you today. Work, work got away from me and that had been my intention. So over the weekend, I know the, the board got kind of a question and then I got some individual questions. So I'm, I'm asking with the express purpose that you can a, a, address it here in, in, in an open session. So Douglas County tax assessments went out this last week, this last weekend. And for a lot of people, their home evaluations went up, but our mill assessments went down. And so I know I heard from some individual people wanting to know why we can't solve our budget crisis because we're now, they individually are, are paying more money into the, into the district from this year compared to last year. And I am, I'm wondering if you can just address that quickly as to why that is not the solution to all of our problems?
School finance is not based on a mill levy like counties and cities. Cities and counties generate revenue from taxes that are generated from a mill levy. And when your valuation goes up, the mill levy increases, or the mill levy can be the same, but you'll generate more revenues. In schools, your formula is a cap based on enrollment. And the mill levy is a result of what's needed to get to the cap after state aid fills the, fills it. So my cap doesn't change at whatever it is based on enrollment. And if taxes or state aid fills the bucket to halfway, then my taxes fill at the other half. If my, but I don't get to, and that makes my mill levy go down because it may be the same amount or less money than I had the year before. I don't get to keep that increase. So what it does is it actually helps the state a little bit. it does is it actually helps the state a little bit, because they'll get more revenue from the 20 mills on general fund, which will go into their state aid, but as districts, if they drop an enrollment and those caps go down in some spaces, then less state aid has to come to school districts, and they have money for other things. So, school districts are not funded based on the tax revenue generated off a mill. The mill is a result of what's needed to fill the bucket after state aid happens. And the only place that we would realize any increase in resources potentially off of a mill levy would be bond and interest fund. So, you might need a smaller mill levy to raise the same amount of money to pay your mortgage or your principal and interest. And then, the eight mills in capital outlay might realize a little more revenue than eight mills would have a year ago. But those are restricted funds for very specific improvement, capital-building type purposes, and doesn't help us in operating dollars for the purpose of the legal max, which is solely based on cap and based on enrollment.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
I have one quick question, and I think another one that might be a bit more involved. I was unable to watch the first meeting, so I just am verifying that they're being recorded again and the public can watch them.
For the budget meeting, yes, I failed to hit record on one of the meetings, and so I apologize, that one didn't get recorded, but we are trying to record all of them, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And that will not be the case for the subcommittees, just the general-
Just the big, the big meeting, yes.
All right, thank you. And then, my other question is, when we asked this committee to reconvene, we had discussion around wages, and we're balancing that with cuts that we have to make, and a reality around staffing issues as well. So, is this part, because I didn't see the meeting, I'm checking to see, is that part of the conversation for the subcommittees and the larger committee moving forward?
So, you saw in the worksheet, for every percent, those are the dollars we would have to come up, and granted, it's all pools, but the reality is if we're going to do those salary increases in the space, then additional cuts, and ultimately, it will be the board to decide how deep and where those go. But that'll be a result of your I B B. conversations, and so, for us to put a number in the budget committee is going to be a result of what those I B B. meetings indicate, or the board says is going to be what those totals are. And then, we'll just have to make a laundry list long enough to try to figure out where those priorities and dollars would come from, depending upon how deep you would have to go, to make the resources available for any salary increases that are decided upon.
So, when you say I B B., you're talking about negotiations committee?
Yes.
And so, what I'm hearing as the board member on the negotiations committee is that, or a board member on that committee, that a hard number with a target would be helpful for communicating back to the budget committee?
Yeah, the budget committee really isn't going to pick the number. The number's going to come from those negotiated groups, and then ultimately, what the board decides that's going to be. And then, we'll have to navigate that into the worksheet in a way in which we can fund then what those decisions are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we are seven minutes over. Are there any other questions that need to be addressed tonight? No? Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you so much, Kathy, appreciate it, as always. Okay. So, the November 29th Board of Education meeting is called to order. All board members are present, with the exception of Paula Smith. Let's see, so for the, I'll read the public comment statement. For the safety of all those in attendance, display of signs or banners will not be permitted. In addition, masks are required to be worn during the meeting, except when speaking at the presenter's podium. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the board held in public, not a public hearing or discussion with the board. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public comment portion of the meeting, as outlined in the board policy B C B I. That time is set aside on the board's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It is not a time for dialogue with or question and answer session with the board. If your comments require follow-up from the board or district staff that will occur after tonight's meeting, the district assumes no responsibility and/or liability for the information shared during the public commentary. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. Please be respectful of the presenters and the board as we discuss and deliberate the issues and topics on tonight's agenda. Comments or actions that are disrespectful of presenters or disruptive of the board's discussions and deliberations, use of foul language, or threats to the board or others in attendance will be, will result in immediate removal from the meeting. In addition, USD 497 provides public access to our board meetings through live streaming. The platform used for this live streaming has acceptable use rules for content on its site. While the district does not delete or hide board meeting videos, the streaming platform may elect to do so if the content of the public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you for your cooperation in these areas. At this time, a motion will be in order to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to pull 3.9.
Okay. Is it 3.1?
3.9.
3.9, okay. Okay. All right, make a motion?
Yeah. I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda and move 3.9 to new business.
Okay.
Is that wrong?
We have to do the call of approval person, then we can-
Oh, thank you.
It'll be up under the consent.
Sorry.
Okay, I see it. Got it, thanks. Sorry, Erica.
The approval of the agenda.
I got it.
Oh, okay.
I move we amend and approve the agenda for the November 29th, 2021 board meeting to include the updated personnel report.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? All right, motion carried. All right. Next, order of business, it's approval of the, let's see, now I'm all messed up. Hang on. Do you approve the agenda? Okay, yes. Special recognition, we'll hear from Dr. Lewis, and then you will hear retirement acknowledgements from Shannon.
Good evening, board, President Hill. I'd like to call Ms. Bassett to the podium for a very special recognition of one of our outstanding high school music educators. Please welcome Ms. Bassett, Principal of Lawrence High School.
Good evening, Dr. Lewis, Board President Hill, and the board members. As mentioned, my name is Jessica Bassett, and I am the principal of Lawrence High School, and I've been given the honor of introducing Lawrence High Schools, I say, one of Lawrence High Schools' best, Mariah Barnett. Mariah has been selected by the Northeast Kansas Music Educators Association as Orchestra Teacher of the Year for 2021 and 22. Mariah, Mariah was nominated by her peers and has been described as an inspired music educator. Her students feel a genuine connection to the music community that she's creating. Mariah nurtures her students' love for music and their craft as musicians. She stretches and supports her students in a way that produces music of the highest quality. Lawrence High School is fortunate to have such an outstanding teacher for four years working with our scholars. Please help me congratulate Mariah for her well-deserved recognition.
Well, genuinely, thank you so much for this recognition. It's honestly an honor to kind of be recognized, not only by my colleagues and my peers, but also by the board. It feels, I don't know, it feels very special, and I'm very grateful for that. What we do at Lawrence High School is pretty amazing. I feel lucky to be a part of that staff, and I couldn't be there without all of my colleagues and all of the help that has been given to me along the way. So, thank you so much, and yeah, have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, and we have a retirement to recognize this evening, and I just want to say, this one's a hard one. Congratulations to Kathy Johnson on your retirement. Please accept the board's heartfelt thanks for your 32 years of service and devotion to this district, our community, and our schools. We will miss you terribly. You have been a rock star in school finance, and I just thank you from the bottom of my heart, and congratulations to you.
Great, thank you for that. And yes, congratulations, Kathy, you will definitely be missed. Next is the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, good evening, again. I'm going to ask the board to not approve Kathy's retirement. So, to pull it, just completely pull it and don't approve it. Again, I too want to, as Shannon mentioned, her retirement is part of the personnel report tonight, although she will continue to work with us through the month of January, and as you saw in the budget update during the work session, there's still a lot of work to do before she leaves the 1st of February. And although she's not leaving yet, I think that her distinguished 32-year career in this district is certainly worthy of several mentions before she officially retires and leaves us. After talking and being in this state for four years, I will tell you, she's highly regarded across the state for her expertise in school finance and for her professionalism, with honor, with dedication, with integrity. She has really guided this district through more than three decades of enrollment and budget fluctuations. While the Kansas School Finance Formula has been tested and retested in court, Kathy's been there, and she knows all the ins and outs as it relates to Kansas School Finance, which, again, having worked in two other states, is very extremely complex. It's a very complex system. And so, Kathy has served as an invaluable resource to me. Every time I talk to her, I learn something new. She's been invaluable to the school board, all of our former Lawrence public school superintendents, and previous school board members with whom she has worked with, as well as school administrators. She's invaluable to our principals and building leaders, as well as our school bookkeepers, and the entire school district, really. During her tenure, Kathy has coached high school gymnastics for 13 years, including three consecutive Lawrence High State Championship seasons in 2004, 2005, and six, and a free state high school state title in 2009. And learned recently that she also holds four records at KU for gymnastics. Her name is still listed there, floor exercise, vaulting, balance beam, and all-around. And Kathy, I can't thank you enough for your excellent leadership and knowledge in financial management. Obviously, we will definitely miss you, and thank you so much for your many years of service to this district. I know she's saying in her head, I'm not leaving yet, I'm not leaving yet. But when she does retire, she will definitely certainly enjoy her family and those grandchildren and one on the way, right? Yeah, so we definitely wish you the very best. As Kathy earlier mentioned, I also want to thank and share my appreciation for all the individuals that are serving on our Budget and Program Evaluation Committee, all of its subcommittees, as well as our boundary advisory committee for their time and their thoughtful study. You know, budget cuts and reallocations are always difficult topics to discuss, and so, my thanks to the staff, board members, parents, community members who are serving on these committees. We were pleased last week to, well, not last week, the week prior to fall break, to accept the Lawrence Board of Realtors River City Recognition Award for Architectural Enhancement in our community, and this honor recognizes everyone that was involved in the Lawrence High School Bond Project. And so, my thanks to all that attended, Board Member Shannon Kimble, Vice President Shannon Kimble was there, as well as some other members of our executive leadership teams, as well as Mr. Riles. So, thank you so much for being there. I have several staff recognitions. First of all, congratulations to Lisa Ball, Lawrence High Science Teacher. She will set sail in December for a deep sea exploration off the Hawaiian Islands. Lisa has been accepted as an Ocean Exploration Trust Communications Fellow aboard the exploration vessel Nautilus. She will take our students along on the journey, they won't go deep sea diving with her. She will be providing several live ship-to-shore interactions with our secondary science classes. And the public is also able to join the Nautilus crew and explore the ocean via the live feed at nautiluslive.com. So, congratulations to Lisa Ball. MITCO and NIST, the credit union, recently honored Ashley Weaver, a Liberty Memorial Central Middle School Social Studies and English Language Arts teacher, as its Educator of the Month for October, and then Lauren Elkin, an L V S. High School Math and Physics teacher, as its Educator of the Month for November. Congratulations to these two outstanding educators, and our many thanks to these community partners for recognizing their hard work. Congratulations to Judy Erpelding, did I say that right? Okay. Free State High Orchestra Director on her appointment as president-elect of the Northeast District Kansas Music Educators Association. That's another huge honor for one of our orchestra teachers here in the district. Have a few student recognitions. Lawrence High's math elites placed in the top five at Washburn's Math Day Competition, and Marcus Saunders shared the individual title for the highest overall score. So, congratulations to these scholars at Lawrence High. Staying at Lawrence High, Lawrence High FFA members placed ninth in the East Central District Horse Evaluation Career Development Event. Among them was Haley Clark, who finished as the top individual in the intermediate division. It's a huge honor for Haley there. Congratulations to Lawrence Middle and High School Musicians. Nearly 200 Lawrence Middle and High School Musicians were selected to perform in the Northeast Kansas Music Education Association Honors Ensemble in early December in Topeka. So, congratulations to all of those scholars. Congratulations to Ashton Rap, Lawrence High's scholar, was selected by audition to perform with the High School Performance Series Concert Choir at Carnegie Hall in February. Such a huge honor for an amazing student, there, Ashton Rap. So, congratulations, Ashton. Eight Free State High Art and Photography Students are finalists in the 25th Anniversary Marion Parks and Rec High School Art Contest. This is an opening reception that will take place December 2nd at the Tim Murphy Art Gallery, where the exhibition will be displayed December 3rd through January the 2nd. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Okay, next is the report of the President of the Board of Education. In the interest of time, I will forego my report, but I would like to comment that it was really exciting to see all the special recognition that you had in your report. Lots of great things going on in our district, so that's really encouraging. Next is public comment. Do we have a volunteer to read the statement?
The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions. However, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in the executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. While you are not required to share your contact information, we ask for that information so district staff or the board can follow up with any specific concerns you may have. The board president will invite comments or topics not included on- The board president will invite comments or topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments related to agenda items are welcome after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit comments to three minutes.
Thank you, GR. We have Jennifer Freeman, virtually. Is that right? No? Okay. Okay, we will move to board commentary.
Okay, all right. There's a lot, but I'll try to condense it down. Policy Committee met November 11th. We worked on completing review of our previously received KASB updates on policies and those items that the committee's recommending for approval by the board are on tonight's agenda for a first read. Wanted to thank the staff at Cottonwood for hosting a tour on November 9th of their facilities and programs for myself and Dr. Lewis. I appreciated the opportunity to learn about their programs and meet some of their staff and their clients that they serve at that facility. Sunflower Elementary School, I'm the Site Council Representative. We met in early November, right after our last board meeting. I did want to share with the board and with administration that parents have raised concerns at that Site Council meeting regarding the plans that are shaping up by KDOT to expand the South Lawrence Trafficway and connect the new interchange on that side of town to 27th Street. There was a lot of discussion about some of the traffic challenges that they're already having on 27th Street in Inverness and safety concerns with students crossing at places they're not supposed to cross and traffic backing up. And apparently, the design of that interchange will dump all the traffic from K10 at that interchange. If they're not going into YSI, they'll go up 27th Street. And so Sunflower parents are very concerned about the increased usage and load on that street because you can't get out of that neighborhood on 27th Street, you actually have to turn onto Inverness. So it could create, I think it's worth our staff that works with our city planners and the county planners to maybe look into that a little more deeply because it seemed, those concerns seem well-founded based on some of the information that was shared. Wanted to announce or reiterate, if you've already read the emails from KASB, some staff transitions at the State School Board Association. Our former Executive Director, John Heim, who had been with our association for 11 years, has been hired as the new Executive Director at the National School Board Association, which is a huge honor and vote of confidence for the leadership that we're developing in our state. I think Dr. Heim will do a wonderful job. I'm very excited for him to take that position. As a result, KASB has hired a new Executive Director. We, I want to share, extend my congratulations again to Dr. Brian Jordan, who we all know because we've worked with him on a number of different occasions for professional development and other opportunities on our board. He has moved into that Executive Director position beginning last week. And I look forward to working with him as a board member under his leadership at the association. I had what's likely to be my second-to-last Governor's Tax Council Meeting on November 19th. We will likely be wrapping up that work in December. The good news is that consensus revenue estimates are very positive. Under Governor Kelly's leadership, our revenue stream is, has expanded and it's, you know, discussions about they'll be able to fully fund their commitment to public education under the Gannon Settlement and then beginning in 2024 with base state aid tied to the CPI. We also reviewed her proposal to ax the food tax. And they emphasized that there are some other positive things such as ending transfers from the Bank of KDOT into general funds. So lots of things moving in a positive direction on that, in that regard. Had a really interesting presentation from Dr. Donna Ginther at KU. She's the economist who's been helping our committee do our work. She's focused on labor market and the impacts of the pandemic. And there's some, if you're interested in more data around that, her presentation was really excellent. I'd be glad to share it with you. And then finally, Governor Kelly, I was able to attend a proclamation signing last Tuesday with Governor Kelly. I want to thank her for signing a proclamation to recognize the upcoming School Board Member Recognition Month. And I just wanted to say how delighted I was that I had the opportunity to take my daughter Hannah with me to meet Governor Kelly because we were out of school on the day that the proclamation was signed. And I just really appreciated that opportunity for my daughter to meet a woman who's done an admirable job as a woman politician and leader in our state. It was a really great experience and I appreciate that she, that she takes the time to recognize the work that we do as school board members. That's all I have. Thanks.
Any other board members? No? Okay. Okay, next is the approval of the consent agenda. And I did say consent agenda earlier, so my apologies.
It was my fault. Thank you for that generous.
So you wanted to pull item 3.9 and I cut you off, so is there anything you might wanted to add to that?
No, but Melissa was showing me how I need to do that. Okay, I've got it. Whenever you're ready, I can.
Okay, sounds good. Go ahead.
I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of 3.9, which will be discussed under New Business.
Second.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimble?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. You're going to add that? Okay. All right, we will go ahead and go. Sorry. Want the reports first, or you want to do the new reports? Okay. All right, reports. Item 4.1. See, Data-Informed Decisions, and this report will be given to us by Dr. Zachary Conrad.
Good evening, board members. I am Dr. Conrad. That's not me. This one is. There we go. Thank you for your time this evening. We will be discussing Strategic Plan Number Five, Data-Informed Decisions. And this evening, we'll be talking about a lot of the processes that have been put in place to support these goals. And so as we review what data-informed decisions are, they ensure instructional decisions by administrators, teachers, staff members and students. Use data to inform all instructional decisions and develop systems that support student-focused database decision-making. That's really what we're going to focus on today, is these systems that are created to make sure that we're using data to inform all instructional decisions. So this quote by Nelson Mandela, I think, really highlights what we're attempting to do here. So I'm going to go ahead and read it and then connect it together. So action without vision is only passing time. Vision without action is merely daydreaming, but vision with action can change the world. So we are acutely sensitive that as we set these visions, that we have actions that follow. And that as our buildings have actions that they're doing, that they're tied to our vision, that we're working in unison to make sure we're seeing the change that we want to see. And so it's tying this vision and action together. So first, I want to give a lot of credit to Patrick Kelly. He, he really did a lot of legwork in tying these goals together. So we, we had building goals, we had KISA goals, we had outcomes for the district. And he put in a lot of work aligning all of these so that we can develop some SMART goals for our buildings to choose from. And so he pulled together the TNL team to really outline some of these SMART goals for buildings to select. And this is what we did this summer. We had them come in and select these goals for their buildings that aligned with our KISA outcomes and also our district outcomes. And so we, we developed these SMART goals, they picked the SMART goals so that we can start to align our vision with action. And so we also put in place a system to support our buildings as they selected these goals. We didn't say select these goals and then we're done. We support them. And so we have one-on-ones monthly to make sure we're connecting the data to the goals. We have three check-ins this year where they come and they have conversations with us about their goals, about the progress they're making on their goals, any shifts that they're making, what the data is informing them on direction. They also receive ongoing feedback through their building leadership teams and also through their staff. So these goals are made aware to everybody in the buildings so that we can make sure we're staying tethered to the vision and the actions. This is just kind of a timeline. We set goals for ourselves as well. And so in August, my goal was to meet with 90% of our staff. We were actually able to meet with 100% of the administrators and teams. In September, again, the goal was 90%. I was able to meet with 85% of them. So unfortunately, I missed a few scheduling and whatnot, but 90% is the goal for us. And then we had in October, our first building goal check-in, where they came to us and we were able to walk through some of these goals. Now in November, the goal is 90%. To make sure that they're getting the support that they need from the district office when it comes to these goals. December is also going to be 90%. And then in January, we're going to go ahead and meet with them again for another building goal check-in. This is all so that we can support the effort moving forward to make sure that the vision is tied with action. One of our main goals in Strategic Plan Five is to make sure that the data is also available, accurate, accessible, and then actionable. So this builds upon each other. First, it needs to be available. So as they went through and selected these goals, we needed to make sure that the data that they needed to collect to know that they're making progress on their goal was available. Sometimes we had to create some things. Often, the data was there and we just needed to pull it together. We needed to make sure it was accurate. As you saw with some of our behavior data, we're still in the process of making sure we're calibrated across all buildings, that we're doing it in a very similar manner, that it is accurate data that we're reporting. Then it needs to be accessible. We need to make it available to them or accessible to them, that they can pull the data easily and share it with staff, share it with leadership teams. And then we need to make sure that it's actionable. So when I talk about available, we have academic and instructional tools that we have to collect this data. FastBridge, we use for screening data. We also have Schoology, which is able to collect a lot of our common assessment data. We're still working and building in that. We have our Kite platform, which gathers our state assessment data. Performance Matters gathers a lot of our district common assessments and then DigiCoach gathers a lot of our observational data as it ties to instruction. For behavior, we have three main tools that we use. FastBridge, again, a screener. SRS, IE, another screener that we use in the district tied to CI3T. We also collect the Power School where we have the log entries. And that's typically the data that is shown here at the board are the log entries. We also have qualitative data that we collect, so when we survey. The Kite platform is developing more of their survey platform for us to use for that purpose. And we're able to pilot that and successfully deliver some surveys through that just recently. We have Thought Exchange and we also have Google Forms that a lot of schools use in order to collect data from their parents and students and staff. We also need to make sure that it's accurate. So I wanted to just have an example here of how we try to make sure our data is as accurate as possible. So I chose district common assessments in the way that we build these items. So first, we have curriculum teams that unpack these standards. They then hand off that, those standards to the assessment team where we start building items to those standards. We have a review process. We pilot the items with the students. They actually take them. We look at the data on the back end to see statistically if they're working and then we start the cycle all over again. Again, it's to ensure that the data is accurate. This is just an example. We do this, we have a process with all of our data, some stronger than others. But again, it's to make sure that it's as accurate as it can be. We also have tools to make sure that it's accessible. And so here's three examples of reporting tools for accessibility. In the top left, we have Performance Matters and what you're seeing is a baseball card report. And this brings data that we have uploaded to the site and it puts it in Excel sheet across so that you could see multiple data points altogether. On the right-hand side is a dashboard that we built out for behavior within Tableau so that building administrators, principals are able to come in here and see graphs and charts that they can grab out of here and make presentations with. And then we also create custom reports within Power School. And so you're seeing a few custom reports that are built out within Power School. Now, it's not just enough to provide the tools, we also want to be able to provide training and information about how to use these tools. So we have a website and a process in place where you can request additional information about how to use these tools. And so we have a team, an 11-person team that meets bi-weekly. We get requests from administrators, either in person or they fill out a Google form. We take these requests and we sit down every other week and actually build out these resources, one-pagers, slide decks, videos, other documents that will help support them using the tools and/or training their staff how to use these tools. Then we disseminate this information. We put it on our webpage. We also send it out to the requestor so that they have additional resources to use the tools. And then we want to make sure that it's actionable, right? So they select their goals that align with their outcomes. This is a continual, continuous improvement process. So they implement a plan, we come back and we look at the data and then we start all over again. So we're constantly improving, or continuous improvement. So that's really the focus of this goal here, is to put a system in place to make sure that they have the data to impact this continuous improvement cycle. So that was quite a few slides and we have some examples after this, but I wanted to stop right now to see if you have any specific questions over the previous slides about the process of doing this. None? Okay. So let's, let's go into a few examples. The first example that we're going to dive into is our assessment data. Okay, so we have some state assessment data and this is all within our Balanced Assessment System. So we have the summative data, we have some what we would call the long-term formative data or district common assessments. We have common formative assessments, which are building level data points. And then you have formative practice, which really is the classroom data. All of this can be fed into Performance Matters where we can look at it across and compare it. So let's walk through what that kind of looks like. First, as we put up this chart, before we get to the words of this, let's walk through this chart a little bit to make sure that we're interpreting it cautiously and correctly. So this is the percent of students in the cohort scoring proficient in math. There was 423 students in this cohort that started in third grade in 2016 and took every assessment up to eighth grade last year. The district goal is to increase math proficiency by eighth grade. So we, as a district, wanted to look at where eighth grade currently is and then backing that up to see if there was any information or data there that we could start diving into to do a root cause analysis. Now, we looked at lots of data around eighth grade math. I'm showing you one graph of lots of data that we dove into. And this is because it's about the process that we go through that we just walked through. So bear with me. This, this may not initially look pretty, but it does inform us. We need to keep in mind, 2020, we didn't We need to keep in mind, 2020, we didn't take the state assessment, and we do have some residual effects of COVID. I'm not sure how much this impacts the drop from sixth grade to eighth grade, but we need to really interpret that with caution because we're not positive how much was impacted there. What I can tell you is across the state, it looks this way. So this isn't just a Lawrence graph. It really does look similar across the state in all of our school district. One of the things that we looked at specifically and we dove into in other multiple graphs is this drop between third and fourth grade. This happens year after year. This isn't impacted by COVID. And this happens across the state. This drop that you're seeing here in Lawrence happens everywhere across the state. The state data looks the same. Individual districts look the same. To the east of us, looks the same. There's this drop. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't do something about it. And so this gives us an opportunity to start exploring what's happening. What's happening in our specific district of why this drop happens? And so we wanted to dive in and do more of a root cause analysis to get at the drop between third and fourth grade. Because if there's a drop there and we never tick back up, there could be something, could be something that we're seeing residual effects year after year. There might be something there. And so we need to dive in and explore what's happening. And it might not be with fourth grade standards. It might actually be something in second grade that is showing up in fourth grade. So we're by no means saying, oh, fourth grade, not doing your job. It might actually be something from second grade, some standards in second grade that are linked to fourth grade or first grade. And so it's, this is a lot more complex than a lot of just gut reactions of looking at this chart. And I wanted to really use this chart as that example. We got to dive in. There's more data here. And we look at that. We use this process to look at that. And so the first thing we wanted to do is we wanted to look at what the state assessment is measuring and really uncover, is it something at the district level? Is it, are these unreasonable expectations that the state is putting on our fourth grade students? So we looked at the Kansas Assessment Program. And on the left-hand side, you see the test blueprint. So within Skills and Concepts, the vast majority of the test, up to 88% of the test, is over five standard domains. So Operations and Algebraic Thinking, Numbers and Operations and Base 10. Within each of those domains, we have standards. So if you look at the first Operations and Algebraic Thinking, the chart to the right actually shows this as Cluster 40A dot A. That means it's fourth grade, Operations and Algebraic Thinking. That's what the OA stands for. And then the additional A is just a sub-letter to start going into more standards. So if you look right underneath that cluster on that chart, it says Standards. 40A1, 40A2, 40A3. That again represents fourth grade, Operations and Algebraic Thinking. And then that specific standard in there is one. And then there's another standard, that's two. And then there's another standard, that's three. All of those standards are major standards on the state assessment. So they're going to get represented in more on that state assessment. So then we look at the evidence statements and we look at the performance level descriptors. These are multi-step word problems. If we look at Level 2 and Level 3, there's a distinction. So in Level 3, it's including problems where the remainder must be interpreted. So let's go ahead and look at a couple of examples so that we can kind of make this real life. Here's a Kansas State example of the Operations and Algebraic Thinking. And this is, these are both examples of Level 2. It's not dealing with remainders. If I go back one slide to look at the difference between Level 2 and Level 3, it has the remainder must be interpreted. Neither of these have a remainder that needs to be interpreted, but they are multi-step. And it deals with multiplication. So these are things that we dive into to look at because then we can have results. Where we can start to explore, okay, now we've given this as a district. District-wide, all of our fourth graders took this. We could start to dive in and hone in on the root cause analysis. We have the data available, and here it is accessible. We've done our work to make sure that it's as accurate as possible. And now we need to start getting into making this actionable. So if I look at 40A2, 12% of our students scored in the green. If I look down below, I can start to try to identify, are there pockets where it's working? That we can take some examples, we can see what's working there, and maybe scale it. We can start to look at that district-wide because we have district data. We can look at our curriculum and say, hey, we're dealing with word problems. Is the curriculum really being explicit with word problems? Are we building that capacity and skills? We can look at professional development, start to say, what are we offering our teachers to make sure that they are well-grounded in teaching multi-step word problems? So as a district, we use this data to explore some of those factors that might contribute. Now, that's how we take our vision and we have some action. We also need to tie it to buildings and what they're doing. We need to take our vision and make sure the actions align. So this is where the building goals come in. And because we have this alignment, they have two building goals that help align with that outcome of eighth grade math, increasing eighth grade math. And here it is, Building Common Formative Assessments, both 11B and 51B, speak to a goal around building common assessments. So here is a common assessment that was built in Schoology. Again, we need to make sure that the data is available, accurate, accessible, so that it can be actionable. So here, in this common assessment, this particular school and grade level had two standards on it. The first standard was fourth grade numbers and operations base 10, and then standards 4 and 5. But the bottom one was fourth grade numbers and operations and algebraic thinking. Sorry, it was actually operations and algebraic thinking. I needed to take out that numbers. 1 and 2. We could see that they took DCA data, saw that it was a weak spot from the district common assessment, remediated, put in an intervention, and then gave a common assessment across the grade level. That's the bottom chart where we see 96%. So it became actionable to them to look at that data, and then they followed up with another assessment to make sure that it stuck. Again, it's aligning all of these things together with our vision and action to make sure that we're doing what's best for students. We also went into classrooms. So these are results from a DigiCoach because what really, really matters is what the teacher is doing with the student in the moment. I'm teaching a lesson and I need to adjust to each student's needs. So I need to be questioning. I need to have this wait time to listen to responses. And you know what? When I get those responses, I need to give appropriate feedback and adjust. Those are the things that are really going to make the difference. It's the teaching and learning process. So we go in and we can actually observe what's taking place in the classroom so that we can say, hey, we noticed the questioning's a little lower. We need to, we need to really bump that up. Or we need to set a goal to make sure that that's 95%. Like when I walk into these classrooms, this is what I need to see because this impacts learning. But all of these things get tied together to make sure that we're supporting students where they are and what they need. Now, I didn't present, that was all according to our math goal, right? Eighth grade math, and I shared with you the process of how we go through and make sure that it's available and accurate, accessible, and actionable. Now, we also looked at ELA data. I'm not saying we haven't looked at any other data points here. It was just one example that we were walking through. And so I did want to quickly just point out and note that on the ELA data, we see this is FastBridge data, and this is from the fall screening. What we have here is, we have categories, low risk, some risk, high risk. And what we see in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, kindergarten does fairly well on those screeners coming in in the fall. That's fantastic. First grade, we see this dip. And then second and third grade. Now, this is data that we've seen in the past with Ames Web. It's the exact same pattern that we've seen in the past. We have this little dip in first grade. What if we didn't have that dip? Where would we be in second grade? What would that look like in third grade? So again, we use the process to go through and dive into that data to really explore how we can better help students access that grade level content so that they're prepared for the next grade level. So I'm not going to dive into that process or more of the ELA data, but it's very similar how we walk through that. I wanted to go to example 2. This is summer learning, how the district uses data to make these decisions. And so we implemented some summer learning last summer. We used ESTRA funds for it, and we wanted to make sure that we have the data to support how we used our funds. We created three categories, high risk, low risk, high risk, moderate risk, and low risk. And we placed students within those categories. I think we used an innovative way to do that. And all students were placed in categories across academic, social, emotional, and demographic. We took those and we said, okay, who has high risk all three categories? And those were the first students we invited to summer learning. We had a cap. Those were our first. And then we went to high risk in two categories, high risk in one category. And all students that were invited did not participate, but that's how we invited them. Which allowed us to set up somewhat of a quasi-experimental study. We had two groups. They were high-risk and invited, and high-risk and invited and didn't come. So we had those two groups. We matched them. So everybody had a twin. Everybody that came had a twin of somebody that didn't come. We based it on Ames Web and the Kansas Assessment Program and on demographics. And we made sure that the group's averages were equal. And we hypothesized that, you know what? The group that goes to summer learning is going to have higher results in the fall. We actually didn't see that. They were about the same in math. But as you look at reading, those that participated in summer learning had lower FastBridge scores in this fall than students that didn't participate in summer learning. And it was statistically significant, that difference. That is a data point for us to now explore what happened. How do we shift? How do we make sure that moving forward, it's as impactful as it possibly can be for students in the summertime? That might mean we set it up a little differently. But that's how we dive into the data to go through the root cause analysis. This is telling us something. Now we can do something with it. And so we're exploring more of that, why this happened, so that we can make those shifts. So I wanted to end with this quote because I think this is indicative of what we're attempting to do. So when we deal in generalities, we shall never succeed. When we deal in specifics, we shall rarely have failure. When performance is measured, performance improves. When performance is measured and reported, the rate of performance accelerates. We're looking to have this continuous improvement process where we're looking at results with our buildings, where our vision and actions are aligned to make sure we accelerate the rate of performance in this district. And I think that we have a solid system in place to do exactly this. And so with that, do we have any questions about the examples?
Thank you so much, Dr. Conrad. I do have a question. So back to the third and fourth grade drop. And you mentioned that this is not unique to our district. So when did this start? Like is there like a timeframe? Is this something new or has it been happening for many, many years?
As long as we have data for it, 2016 is where the state has their data points. It's always happened. I assume that the new assessment, which started in 2015, that it was true for that year as well, but I have it since 2016, and it's always happened.
Okay. Any other comments for Dr. Conrad?
Just to confirm, so the work with the data that goes on at the building level, this is happening during the PLC time, right?
Correct. Some of it is happening during the PLC time. Yes.
Are we doing the PD for staff in terms of accessing all of this data and manipulating it and kind of using these tools? Are we doing that for every teacher? Or is it more focused on like the learning coaches that are at the buildings? Or particular teacher leaders at the buildings? How does that, how are we supporting our staff to really? I mean, this is very powerful tools, right? Kind of, who are we supporting to access those tools and really get that information down to the classroom level?
Yeah. So I think it depends on the building. Some building administrators will lean a little more heavy on the learning coaches for some of that lifting. Some administrators take that on themselves. So I think it's specific to the building. But at the end of the day, when we have our one-on-ones, that's a conversation we have about what that looks like. And so it varies across, but we make sure that that every building administrator is supported in making sure that their staff has that training and knowledge.
I wonder if over time you'll see, you would see any defining differences in outcomes based on how, how building leaders are kind of managing that process, right?
We already see indications of that. Because as you can imagine, everybody's in a different spot in rolling this out and some of the priorities that they have in their buildings. And so we're seeing some indications, early indications, that as they implement certain elements, especially when it comes to like PLCs and the common assessments, where they focus on the standards, utilization of some of the tools, Schoology, that we do. But it has a lot to do with the culture and the support that they're receiving. And so not everybody's at the same point, but we're getting there.
Hope to kind of even that out a little bit over time? Or the goal, not the hope. Hope's not a strategy, right? The goal, to even that out over time?
And I think that as they come in with the building check-ins, because they report on these goals, right? So they put PLCs down, common assessments down as a goal. So when they come in and report and say, you know what? Haven't quite gotten there yet, or we're not as far along. That's an opportunity where we can step in and say, okay, what can we do to better support you to get you there? And so it is trying to move everybody along and progress.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Conrad. Appreciate it. Okay, so we do have Jennifer Freeman on the line. There were some technical difficulties earlier connecting. Jennifer, are you there? Can we go ahead and move to new business and then we can see if we can resolve that? Okay, thank you. Okay. So, new business, Kelly requested to pull item 3.9 from the consent agenda. Any comments on that, Kelly?
Yeah, so I, this is more typically a question I would have sent to you earlier, but because of the holiday, I didn't have a chance to. So I just want some clarification around this. There are a couple of things that I think are helpful for me to understand. The background information cites the 1992 Kansas State statute, but I think even in the 2016 update, there isn't a requirement that we have a district site council. Is that correct? Does anyone know?
It's not in the statute. It's in the KISA regs for a
It's in the KISA regs for accreditation. So, I looked at that too because I remember the time when we were told we had to switch from, we had kind of a finance committee. And we had to create a district site council and what was the reason for that? It's the, it's the, it's the State Department's regulations rather than statute.
Okay. So, there is a regulation around it. That's what I wanted to understand because the, one of the things that I've observed having served on the district site council is that it's, and you know, the fact that we moved to quarterly, I'm assuming is having to do with staffing and wanting to make sure that we're utilizing administrator time effectively. Is that correct? At least, that's what it seems like in there. Okay. So, I was asking about it because it's, it seems like this particular board committee is starting to get duplicative when we look at the community membership we have on the boundary committee and then the work that the budgetary committee is doing. Just knowing that these particular community members, the four, making sure that they have an opportunity to meaningfully participate in getting feedback to the board, I think has not been something that has been very effective with this particular committee. So, I actually asked to pull it because I wasn't entirely sure whether we needed to have it at all, but it sounds like we do. So, given that, I would recommend that we support the recommendation. I just wanted to understand that piece of information.
Do we have an official motion?
I can make it since I pulled it. I move the Board of Education approve the 2021, 2022 USD 497 District Site Council membership.
Second. Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Do we have Jennifer on the line? No? Okay. If it'll not have the effect her.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. You want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'm going to have to put this on now. Okay, you're on.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi. Hi, Jennifer. Thanks for joining.
Hi, sorry. It's, had a little difficulty getting on.
That's okay. Go ahead. Yes, you have, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. I am Coach Bill Freeman's daughter. And what I would like to see is the possibility of the school board naming the football field after my dad. I know I approached the board back in 16, 17 about getting the field or getting the stadium named after my dad. And I was told that they were going to have a steering committee put together and try and get other coaches, something to honor other coaches also besides just my dad because Lawrence High's had great coaches from, from Joanie Wells, the volleyball coach, to the wrestling coach, to the swimming, basketball, Ted Juno, whatever. And it just kind of got stalled. I never heard anything from the athletic director. I never heard any more from the school board. And I feel that not only does my dad deserve recognition, but so does all the other coaches that have come through and carried on Lawrence High's tradition. And you've got a former Bill Freeman head coach as your football coach right now who, Clint Bowen, is amazing and he played for my dad. So, it's kind of come full circle. But I know that like Manhattan High School has got their field named after Lou Lane, who was their football coach, who my dad and Lou were big arch rivals. Manhattan and Lawrence have always been arch rivals in football. And they didn't name the stadium after him, they named the field after him. So, I don't know if there's something else on my end I need to do besides talking to you guys, whether I get letters of recommendation from former players. It's been in the newspaper. I sent a copy of the picture of the article to Anthony a couple of weeks ago when I tried to first get this going and it didn't, and it just stalled out. So, I'm open to suggestions. I'm open to comments. I'm open to questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jennifer. It sounds like you asked a question and so, we'll have Dr. Lewis follow up with you via email.
That would be perfect. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Closing announcements. Dr. Lewis?
No, other than, again, I appreciate the board's time and engagement this evening. We're looking forward to our next board meeting. We will discuss our legislative priorities. In addition, talk to board officers about a potential December 20th work session to dive deep into the subcommittee's recommendations, so.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?